Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation by Pastor Terry Woodward, Victory in Christ Ministries. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please stand with me. Pastor?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
My name is Pastor Terry Woodward of Victory in Christ Ministries. I'm honored and want to thank Commissioner Hamburg for this opportunity to lead this invocation. If everybody would bow your heads and all hearts clear. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord. We thank you for this time and we thank you for this, Father God, this Board of Commissioners meeting that you have ordained, Father God. We ask, Father God, in the name of Jesus, that you bless this meeting, Father God, that you guide the hearts of those that you've placed in authority, Father God. Let their hearts flow as the rivers of water, Father God, in the direction that you guide them, Father God, and ask they help, Father God, to build a better county for us, Father God. We ask, Father God, that those that are residents, Father God, yield, Father God, unto your direction, to your commissioners, Father God. Let this meeting, Father God, yield the fruit of your love, Father God, for us, Father God, and we thank you for it in advance. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 17th Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any members of the Board wish to offer any amendments?
Amendments to the agenda. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to accept.
So moved.
For Dr. Rotherman, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. Ms. Nannas.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the proclamation honoring the life of Jessica Deborah Snow. This is presented by Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors the life of Jessica Deborah Snow. Whereas Jessica Deborah Snow, beloved Clayton County Juvenile Court CASA or court-appointed special advocate volunteer, entered eternal rest on July 9th, 2021, with her husband, Mitch Snow. Mrs. Snow was a dedicated, responsible, and engaged Clayton County resident. And whereas preceded in death by her parents, Jane C. Wheeler and Dorothy Wheeler and her brother, James Rudy Wheeler Jr., Mrs. Snow leaves to treasure her loving memory, her husband, Mitch Snow, daughters Denise Snow and Shanice Stewart, and grandchildren Caitlin Harrell, Bobby Harrell Jr., Andrea Harrell, and Chase Kirby. And whereas Mrs. Snow is definitely on angels' wings, the beautiful and fitting testimony of her daughter Denise Snow states, "A legacy of love you leave behind, a heart so gentle, a heart so kind. The toughest challenge you had to face, painful cancer, was fought with grace. Your amazing will and strength to fight, God called you home into the light. Above the clouds, up in the sky, on angels' wings, you now will fly." And whereas affectionately called Nona, Mrs. Snow grew a garden of love in her heart for each of her four grandchildren. The bond they shared will always be unbroken and cherished. And whereas a graduate of Clayton State University in Morrow, Georgia, with a degree in administrative science, Mrs. Snow had a successful career with Citicorp Credit Services, Chase Manhattan Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and Truist Bank, where her boundless optimism and infectious smile led to many lifetime friendships. Now therefore I, Felicia Franklin, Commissioner on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, am grateful for Mrs. Snow's endless passion and dedication to our most vulnerable population. I stand in prayer for comfort, strength, and guidance for her family and all who love Jessica Deborah Snow. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 17th day of August in the year 2021.
Too often you look at the folks that are up here on this diet. At the end of the day, we are a community, a community of one, and there are many people who give their lives, who are serving in many capacities, who serve on various boards, or like Mrs. Snow, who serve quietly. And those are the ones that you may not know, but a child out there is grateful for this now. The court system is grateful for Mrs. Snow. A parent is grateful for Mrs. Snow. Most of all, Felicia Franklin is grateful for Mrs. Snow and Snow family, because you all are the committed families that I base every decision on. And I thank God for the life of these three and your life, and your life. And thank you. I love you.
Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county, excuse me, residency for the record. Speak clearly into the mic, and speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Representative Sandra Scott.
She left.
She left already. Orlando Gooden.
At the last Board of Commissioners meeting, the question was asked during public comments by Ms. Calley, "Where's the money being spent?" Well, we have a new Northwest Library, Flint River Community Center, and a Lake Spivey Recreation Center. All of those are very beautiful facilities. We had floor renovations at Frank Bailey and Charles Griswell Senior Centers. The Board of Commissioners is supporting our law enforcement. We have excellent budget presentations by CFO Ramona Bibbins and her staff. So the answer to her question is in the budget amendments that are hidden in the consent agenda. My focus is on where will we spend it. The Development Authority presentation by the Crest Group on Economic Development was very good and a blueprint for success. But the workforce presentation by Sidney Bourget was the best. They both covered the past, present, and future, and they laid out plans on how we're going to get there. Also, the presentation by Roman United and Development, in addition to the Mountain View Project and developing the old Holiday Inn property at Old Dixie Highway, will change the image of the community. Chairman Turner, thank you for addressing my concerns on annexation. I have had conversations about it, and these questions come up. The Board of Commissioners won't challenge it if a majority of the people want it. Well, how do we know without a public hearing? The Board of Commissioners has hearings for builders, for rezoning, and on universal trash. Will the county lose control of standardized setbacks and distance between houses? For example, look at the area around the Lovejoy Post Office. Also McDonough Road and Jonesboro Road. You could actually stand in the middle and touch the sides of the houses. Isn't there a revenue loss since we will now be paying our taxes? I will be paying my taxes to the city of Lovejoy, which is an interesting conversation since we were talking about taxes. The city of Lovejoy has universal trash pickup, so we don't get a choice. Are the cities of Jonesboro, Riverdale, and Morrow also doing annexations?
I'm done. Oh, it's a question. You're done? Yes, it was. Just one correction to the conversation about annexations. I didn't say if the majority, I said if it's 100% of whoever wants to be annexed in, then there's no sense of fighting it because they will win unequivocally.
So if one person objects, then it won't go through?
No, I did not say it won't go through. We will have to decide whether or not it's worth fighting.
Well, can I put it on record now I'm objecting, so when it comes up, you already have your individual?
We won't know about it until they query you.
No, the reason I said then, I mentioned it to you before, that they annexed Liquor Road to put a liquor store. Okay? Across from the post office a while back, they actually annexed that. Now, I understand that was actually District 3's Commissioners's place. So they annexed that to put a liquor store. So if they keep annexing, my fear is not so much the taxes, it's the type of houses that they're building. Okay? Where I live, distance is 20 feet. When I looked on the agenda today, Panhandle Road is up for evaluation or approval or whatever. If they can't build 10 plus 10 and a 20-foot setback, then they shouldn't be allowed. Remember when I said to you, what they build in Brookhaven? Let them build it here. If they want to annex Lovejoy, let them put those houses over there. In District 3, we don't want them.
Well, as a municipality, they have a right to go through annexation. State law.
I should have called Buckhead and let them know that they have a right to do that.
Just like they have a right to become a city.
Chairman, can I add that the state, as of today, I believe, had their first public hearing on annexation between the municipalities and the counties. They just created a new committee, which is going to begin to review the state laws on annexation. So that just took place on it. We had representation from ACCG there as well today. So there has been a lot of discussion behind that, because they say the last time the annexation laws had been looked at was 2007.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because of conversation we had about annexation. A municipality, and I said, is Jonesboro doing it? I mean, in essence, to me, I don't know what the, I'd have to ask Ms. Bibbins, every time you get annex, isn't that lost revenue for the county? Because it then goes into the city municipality's money bank? Well, we don't lose money.
You pay county and city tax.
I'm paying y'all too much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Willie Ward.
You signed up to speak? Or did you already speak?
I didn't. I speak for it.
Okay, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Garber. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. First name is, don't get me, Elmenar Lord?
Thank you for assisting, Mr. Loach.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Elmenar Lord, Clayton County. First of all, I want to say, I want to say thank you, Chairman Turner, for addressing my problem. But into Captain Roberts?
Chief Roberts.
Chief Roberts.
Yes.
So he's working on it, but at the same time, I'm just scared at night to sleep, and every day I have to go out of my house as daylight, and I have to go back in at night because of the loud sound that my neighbor is making in his house, so it would affect me. Because whenever Tommy heard me in my kitchen, I don't know how he knows that I'm in my kitchen. When I go through my bathroom, the same noise. My bedroom, I have to let my bedroom downstairs to go upstairs. And whenever I'm upstairs at night, he put lights in the room, and he kept doing it every day. Even my backyard, I can't go into my backyard, I have to put the dark curtain, because he always putting light inside my kitchen and noise. So I can't even cook. I can't tell the day last I cook in my house. Every day, as daylight, I have somewhere to go and go back in at night. And he put things in my AC. I haven't turned it on until maybe about six months, and I've got somebody chiming it up. And every night he works on my AC by putting blue liquid. I have to turn my video. It's just going on 24/7, every day, every day that God sent. So I'm just going through this trauma.
And you're still working with the police department, correct? Yes, please continue. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions on any of the items?
Yes, item 25.
Commissioner Franklin, item 25.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
As I stated before, there are some questions regarding accuracy and a notice that went out, number one, the items that were presented as the rollback rate for several years. Also, understanding that there are other options for us. We have 18 million that's sitting in the fund balance that normally would have been used in any given year. Some of that funding could be used to set back, to absorb some of this weight to the citizens during these extremely difficult times. And then also the mere fact that, for me, the budget still does not quite prioritize the biggest and the most important items for our citizens, and so I'm not able to vote on that item.
You're not able to what?
I'm not voting for that item.
You're staying from vote?
No, I'm gonna vote nay. I just gave my comment before we get to it.
Well, this is a consent agenda, so you're gonna vote on vote.
This is item 25.
25.
I understand it's on the consent agenda.
So, how's that work, Mr. Reed?
You're asking what happens if you call for a vote?
No, I'm gonna call for a vote, and it's on the consent agenda. I'm calling the vote for the consent agenda. She wants to abstain.
No.
I don't think that's, I think she says she's just gonna vote no, but she's explaining the reason why she's voting no.
Correct.
All right, I stand corrected. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
And if I may, and since you're gonna, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I'll wait to acknowledge. The challenge with the consent agenda is, people will understand, there are items on that agenda that I will have to vote no to as well. It doesn't mean that I don't believe in those items. I don't believe that those items are important to us. The challenge is, is when the consent agenda is put together, the only way to pull an item off is to have a firm vote to take it away off of that consent agenda by the board. I've done that in the past without support. So unfortunately, therefore, in order to make sure that the most important item is voted to what I feel is going to be best for the people that I serve, I'm gonna have to vote my conscience, my research on all these items, because otherwise I would not be able to pull it off alone. I don't make the agenda, it was added in.
Any other comments? Comments on any of the other items? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose.
Nay.
3-1, it passes. Next.
Mr. Chairman, the next two items are board appointments.
All right, the first board appointment is zoning advisory group. It is the chairman's recommendation. Mr. Herman Turner's appointment to the zoning advisory group will expire September 2nd, 2021. New appointment will begin September 2nd, 2021, and will expire September 2nd, 2024. I move to reappoint Mr. Herman Turner. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Ms. Nannas. Next board appointment is Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities. Commissioner Davis selection. Ms. Janice Scott has resigned from the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region 3 Advisory Council. New appointment will start immediately and will expire February 28th, 2024. Commissioner Davis.
I move that we hold that until the September, which meeting is that, in September? To the September meeting?
First meeting or second?
First meeting.
Okay. September what, 7th? All right, Madam Clerk, hold that till September 7th.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are zoning items. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speakers shall talk directly into the microphone and begin by stating their name, address, and name of any organization they represent. Abusive, profanity, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, yelling, et cetera, will not be permitted. That a show of hands or standing quietly will be permitted to show support or opposition to a speaker's position. The first zoning item is number 39, BOC 2102-0090, PUD, rezone GB to PUD for 46 single-family lots. This is decision only.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Just for the record again, the staff is going to state the case again, and we're gonna read the conditions for this particular case. And again, my name is Tyler McSwain, representing planning and zoning staff for this evening. Again, the applicant, Clayton Terra LLC, has requested to rezonate 15 acres of land located at 1425 Terra Boulevard and 10415 Panhandle Road in Hampton, Georgia. The request is from rezoning from General Business and to PUD, Plan Unit Development, for the subdivision of 46 single-family detached lots. I will read the conditions for this request for the record. And please note that there may be some amended language in these conditions, so I'll read them, and they're also projected on the screen to follow along. So again, the staff is recommending approval conditional. The first condition, development shall be no more than 46 single-family residential lots consistent with the approved preliminary plat dated on January 4th, 2021, and a minimum 50% master bedrooms on the main floor as a condition. Number two, all homes must have front facades constructed with 40% brick, stone, hard-cut stucco, a combination thereof, with remainder of facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials reflective of the Panhandle overlay. Specifications for architectural appearance for residential homes. Vinyl shall only be permitted to be used in ease and softness. Condition number three, a plan book shall be submitted prior to the final plat application to the Community Development Department. That shall include, but not limited to, building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, dormers, columns, corner rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping fences, retaining walls, exterior colors, and materials. Condition number four, a homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses in structures. Continuing conditions. Condition number five, provide one-axis street from Panhandle Road aligned with Bonanza's Church Road and other right-of-way and streetlight improvements as required by the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. Condition number six, residential lots shall have the following minimum setback standards: front yard, 30 feet; side, 10, with a total of 20; and rear, 25 feet. All corner lots shall have 30-foot yard setbacks on both road frontages. Condition number seven, all homes to have a minimum of two-car garages. Condition number eight, provide a 25-foot vegetative buffer with a minimum 6-foot height fence located internal of the proposed buffer area adjacent to single-family zone properties. Condition number nine, at least 100% of the total 20% required open space shall be accessible by public street or right-of-way and shall be usable, active recreational space to include picnic areas with tables, and must provide a pavilion area and community garden area not less than one acre in area. And lastly, condition number 10, must provide a decorated fencing and appropriate planting year-round to screen the rear yards for all lots adjacent to Panhandle Road and Terra Road. That concludes the conditions.
All right, is the applicant present? Please take one. Sir, you, go ahead, state your name for him.
My name is David Harris. I'm an attorney here in Jonesboro, represent the applicant. We already had the public hearing on this matter, as you know.
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm here to ask, to respond to questions or comments from the board.
But this is for decision only, I'm sorry to cut you off, but...
I must say, we do not agree with three of the conditions.
That's what I was getting to. Okay, the three being?
And the three of them are, beginning with number one, we would prefer not to stipulate that 50% of the homes would have master on main, because Smith Douglas sells 90% of their homes on a pre-sale, pre-construction basis. So the people can choose what they want. They've got 11 plans that they intend to offer in this development that have master on main. So I would rather us not be restricted to the 50%. We're gonna let the market decide if it's seniors and somebody like me that wants master on main, I'll have 11 plans to pick from in this development. There's only 44 lots, 46 lots, so we're not comfortable with that. The other thing that we're not comfortable with is the side setback. We've asked for seven and a half versus a 10, and then 15 feet versus 20 in between homes, and that's been run by the Clayton County Fire Department. It meets the fire code. And then the, I think the other thing we're willing to do, and number nine, we're willing to do the pavilion on the community garden area, we're willing to make that available, but we would ask that the HOA decide... willing to make that available, but we would ask that the HOA decide the size of that garden, rather than just say it's gonna be a one acre, we'd rather the HOA and the, the community members decide what they want. So, with those exceptions, we're fine with the conditions.
Okay, and again, this is, uh, for decision only, so Commissioner Franklin?
Yes. Hey. Good evening. All right, so, um, we did do the research on the setback and so forth, and I want to confirm, Mr. Fire Marshal here? Or Tyler, can you confirm what the requirement is for the side and the front yard setback in terms of our county code?
I think I have a copy of the ordinance.
Well, hopefully one of our staff members does. Because I, I, I know you may have it, but I wanna make sure that they could confirm that, because that was a question last time you brought it before us, when I was present.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. Um, in, in our code, we do have specific setback requirements, but in regards to what's being presented here, this is a PUD, so those setbacks will not be as typical, but will be subject to the requirements of the Clayton County Fire Marshal's department.
Okay, when we heard this before, I specifically asked for the staff to please find out what the county code speaks to specifically to our minimum side and front setback. That was a specific question that I asked, and that was, uh, well over two months ago at this point. Uh, Mr. C O O, is there any way we can get that information so that we can make this decision tonight, maybe? Thank you, I appreciate it. The other thing is, I'm fine, and the community is fine with, um, lowering the garden, but honestly, you gotta remember, when you all are selling the homes, then you're not gonna turn that HOA over to the community as of yet, so they wouldn't be able to make that determination until at least you've met the number of homes that need to be built for the HOA to be turned over to the community to make that decision. So what I am going to say is that what we can do is reduce the acreage for a total amount of acreage for the picnic area, the tables, and the pavilion. We can reduce that, uh, for the total area and space, but it's still fine for it to be defined, that there must be space for those items collectively. And the other thing is, we're gonna add in that there's one trash pickup service, uh, for this community, which will be done however they wanna do it, through their HOA fees, dues, but there is one trash pickup service, similar to what, um, other communities do within other areas, areas, so that there is not several different, um, trash services coming through there. Other than that, once we finally get this information back, um, I'm, I'm ready to move forward, but I think it's pertinent that regardless of it being a PUD, that we also make sure that the decisions that we're making are in line with what's on our code. And I'm sure you know, uh, because you said you pulled the code, but again, I wanna make sure that staff is able to present that and to confirm it.
Commissioner Franklin, can we possibly make that decision tonight?
I'm hoping so, sir, because I asked for this several months ago.
Okay. I mean, I have the code set right here.
Staff will get your answer in just a minute.
Yes. How's your basketball going, by the way, since we got away?
I'm sorry, how is?
At, at basketball playing, you played, uh, Mr. Jack Hancock lately in basketball?
I did, I beat Jack all over the place. No, we, uh, Commissioner, you're talking 50 years ago, can you believe that? We had a reunion two years ago, so, uh, no, Jack's a good man.
Definitely.
We did play a lot together, and, uh, but, uh, kinda out of that now.
Okay.
I'm lucky to walk up here and stand.
Well, we're glad you can walk up here. Hopefully, we can get an answer.
So, so your comment about the size, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I think we're fine with it, but I'm not sure what it was.
We just need to reduce it down, we can reduce it down for the total amount. Um, the total amount can be two half, I mean, it could be a half acre, I'm fine with that, uh, because what people don't realize is that if people don't plant and they don't wanna garden, then you still have a eyesore, so...
That was our point.
Yeah, so I think a half an acre should be sus- 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 sufficient, you could find those pockets anyplace you wanna find them, but just doesn't ain't a half an acre. Oh, while we're waiting, though, on the, um, 50% of the masters on the main, uh, we did discuss, though, that that's one of the things that the community is asking for, and people who are wanting to come here, because there are a lot of combined families and families who are needing to have that, but I think with the 11 plans, that should be fine. I would like to actually have it in there, if we could get to like 35%, at least at the end of the day, if that's a goal, we can do that.
The client's not here, but I think that can go along with that.
I figured, I figured that were. All right, so we only have one other question to answer, and we're ready to move forward, hopefully.
Excuse me, everybody.
No patience, sir.
I'll be all right. No, no. I just didn't know if I needed to sit down and...
You can sit down.
Sit down and shut up, or just...
At this point, when she gets back, it'll be just for a decision, so...
Excuse me.
Okay, what was your recommendation on, what were you offering on the setback? Because I know what the state states now, and which is what we're gonna look at.
We're asking for seven and a half foot.
On each side, a total of 15.
Fifteen between homes, which is consistent with the code.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, Tyler, let's let this reflect, um, the setback as stated, because that is within, um, the code and the state code, so that way we're consistent, which is a seven and a half.
So seven and a half will be changed for?
It'll be a total of 15, yes.
Total 15, seven and a half?
I just, for those that are listening, I just confirmed that.
Would that change, sir? Are you in agreeance with a...
And I'm also in agreement with the Commissioner's statement about the one garbage service.
Thank you.
So that would be a total of 11 conditions, with the addition of the condition for the trash?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, Tyler. And I make a recommendation that this board approves it with those, uh, recommendations. We only added the one and the trash service, we made an augmentation on number nine, which is gonna go down to a half an acre, and then also the augmentation on the other item, I can't see it on here, but, uh, we're gonna reduce it down to 35% with the master on the main, which should fit within the 11 plans, which should give us a, um, a community that's gonna be, um, feasible for our senior citizens.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Franklin, uh, excuse me. Uh, Commissioner Franklin, uh, just to clarify, the percentage for the main, we just wanna make sure we got that number correct.
35%.
35%?
They should be able to meet that, yes. It'll probably be over that amount, but...
Minimal.
That's the minimal.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Thank y'all for persevering with us on this, this thing was filed January the 6th, so I'm very grateful that y'all, y'all fit to give us what we asked for. Thank you again.
Take care.
If there's another companion case...
Okay.
Please, I'll see, we'll call you right back.
The next item is LS 2102-0022, preliminary plat approval of 46 single-family lots.
Good evening, again, this request is for the preliminary plat of the previous case. Again, I'll read the updated conditions that will go along with this request. Uh, staff is also recommending approval for this request for the preliminary plat. Again, this is a PUD, and I'll read the conditions, uh, if needed. No?
I'm ready.
Oh, you're ready? Okay, sorry about that. All right, condition number one, the development shall, shall be no more than 46 single-family residential lots consistent with the, uh, approved preliminary plat, uh, from January 4th, 2021, with a minimum 35% master bedrooms on the main floor. Number two, all homes must have a front facade constructed with 40% brick-stone hard-cut stucco combination thereof, with the remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials reflective of the Panhandle overlay specifications for architectural appearance for residential homes. Vinyl shall only be permitted to be used with the ease and softness. A plan book shall be submitted prior to the final plat, uh, application of the Community Development Department, uh, that shall include, but not limit to, building elevations, design criteria applicable to entries, porches, doors, windows, dormers, columns, corners, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing, retaining walls, exterior colors, and materials. Condition number four, a homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses and structures. Numbers, number five, provide one access street from Panhandle Road aligned with Bonanza Church Road and the other right-of-way and streetlights improvements as required by the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. And amended condition number six, residential lots shall have a, the following minimum setbacks, uh, front yard, 30 feet, side, seven and a half, for a total of 15, and rear, 25 feet. All corner lots shall have 30-feet yard setbacks on both road frontages. Condition number seven, all homes to have a minimum of two-car garages. Condition number eight, provide 25-foot vegetative buffer with a minimum of 6 height fence located internal of the proposed buffer area adjacent to single-family zone properties. Condition number nine, at least 100% of the 20% required open space shall be accessible by public street or right-of-way and shall be usable active recreational space to include picnic areas with tables, provide a pavilion area, and a common community garden area not less than one acre of area.
One half.
And condition number 10...
One half.
I'm sorry? Half an acre, I'm sorry. And half an acre in area. Condition number 10, provide decorative fencing and appropriate planting year-round to screen the rear yards for all lots adjacent to the Panhandle Road and Terra Road. And lastly, condition number 11, uh, that a trash service is to be provided for the community.
All right, and that's one trash service, all right.
One trash service. Well, this is public hearing, so, sir, if you take the mic.
I have no additional comments, we're fine with the modified, uh, amendments, if, if they're the same amendment.
Okay, but this is a public hearing, so would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal? Anybody should come up and speak against it? No? Okay. So, at this time, as I said, this is a public hearing, is anybody would like to come and speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? All right, see, any hearing none? Is there anyone like to speak against? Please come forward, sir.
Horrano Good in Clayton County. The same objections I stated in public comments, which just seems to be ignored and approved, if the fire department states a setback, the county can still say they want their setback at a higher amount. It just meets fire code, so I'm confused. The other thing is, on Terra Boulevard, there's a, uh, Meadows, Terra Meadows, anyway, they have a HOA. It's a disgusting-looking facility, the way they maintain it, so because it's an HOA does not mean the facility will be maintained properly. I still say, you should establish your own setbacks at 15 or 20 feet, 10, 10. If the fire code says seven and a half, so what? Make it 10. This way, the builder comes in and says, why put 50 homes when I can put 100? And they're all sitting in the, it's gonna start looking like Philadelphia, attached, detached homes.
Anybody else like to speak against? Anybody else opposed? All right, hearing is seen and done, Commissioner Franklin?
Once again, I do make the recommendation as the, um, it was read into the, uh, minutes. Uh, one other thing, not necessarily, um, that it needs to be added, uh, one of the things I spoke with another developer about is making sure that the landscaping allows to where there's contiguous landscaping in the front of those homes, which gives a little better, but, better bit of a look in between homes as well, and that's just something that we can discuss, it's not something that needs to be added. It's very simple, okay? But other than that, I'm ready to make that recommendation to approve it, and, um, and this is actually for the community, this is actually a better zoning, because it was zoned for commercial, and I would not want a commercial, um, property behind those homes at this time, because we're dealing enough with the commercial, um, spaces in that area, and so this is definitely going to be an added, an additive to our community, so...
All right, the motions to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Thank you again.
All right.
The next zoning item is BOC 2104-0105, FLEP amend GC to MDR to allow 195 single-family attached town home units.
Again, uh, Tyler McSwain, planning and zoning, the applicant is requesting, as stated before, at located at 9110 Thomas Road, Jonesboro, Georgia, uh, request to rezon from agriculture to PUD.
Yeah, I was about to say, I don't see where you're at. Also, are we around, uh, 41?
41, and...
Okay.
Sorry, try that again, all right? The applicant Battle Law, they're requesting a future land use map amendment. Uh, this request includes a change from general commercial to medium-density residential to allow for a plan and unit development of 195 units, single-family attached town homes. Um, the property is located at, uh, 1816 Noah's Ark Road and 9497 Thornton Boulevard. Uh, staff wants to also acknowledge that, that the applicant, uh, has submitted in information stating that they would like to table this request, um, to the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Right, Ms. Battle?
Good evening, Commissioners, long time no see. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, Blum West Court Square, Kansas City.
Your desire to, uh, table this?
Um, yes, we are asking, um, for tabling of this matter, um, until the October, um, Board of Commissioners, um, hearing meeting.
All right, do we have a date on that?
Yes. That date for October would be October 19th.
Commissioner Davis, how you want to proceed?
Yes, I've already spoken with, uh, Ms. Battle, and, uh, we would definitely recommend tabling this matter. And also too, I don't know if we can put them all, we have taken them all one at a time?
Yeah.
The next two as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, our request that we, motion that we table this matter.
All right, there's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second on the motion, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
The next item is number 42, BOC 2104-0106, PUD to rezon GB to PUD for 195 single-family attached town home units.
Stat, planning staff have restated the previous comment regarding this rezoning request, the petition to be tabled until the October, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting, which will be October 19th.
Ms. Battle? Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, motion to hold it until October 19th.
I'll second the motion, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous, next.
Next item is number 43, P plat 2104-0020, plat approval for 195 single-family attached town home units.
Again, planning staff will follow the motion from the previous request, and also to table this until October 19th.
Ms. Battle, agree? All right, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to hold until October 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Next, item number 44, BOC 21... Next, item number forty-four, BOC twenty-one oh-two zero-one zero-zero. PUD rezoning from AG to PUD for sixty-three single-family detached homes. This is decision only.
So, again, the request is for, uh, rezoning. I will state the, um, conditions. Uh, again, we want to note that there may be some amended language in the conditions, so I will read them to you all. Uh, the condition number one, the maximum number of lots shall be sixty-three. The site layout shall reflect the submitted revised site plan dated from June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one via email, and also to include two community garden areas, including one between proposed lots eleven and twelve, a playground, and pavilion areas. Condition number two, the applicant must comply with floodplain and stormwater management per requirements of the Clayton County Water Authority prior to approval of a land disturbance permit in the site development application process. Condition number three, all homes must have front facades constructed with forty percent brick, stone, hard-cut stucco, or combination thereof, with remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials compatible with the building elevation submitted with the request. Vinyl shall not be permitted to be used in easel or softens. Condition number four, a plan book should be submitted prior to the final plat application to the community development department and shall include but not limit to building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, storms, columns, concaves, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing, retaining walls, and exterior colors and materials. Condition number five, a homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas, covenants, regulating sustainable uses and structures. Condition number six, residential lots shall have the following minimum setbacks. Front yard twenty feet, side ten, with a total of twenty, and the rear yard twenty feet. All corner lots shall have thirty-foot yard setbacks on both road frontages. Condition number seven, each single-family home shall have a minimum of eighteen-hundred square feet of heated floor area with a minimum of two-car garages. Side entry garages will be used on corner lots where otherwise feasible based upon the required turn radius. Condition number eight, access to development shall be via one curb cut from Thomas Road. All street light and right-of-way improvements shall be subject to the approval of the Transportation and Development Department. Condition number nine, an attractive landscaped area shall be provided at the entrance to the development. And lastly, condition number ten, uh, the preliminary plat shall include the following development notes. Uh, this is the condition we placed on for stating that no developer or builder shall develop or construct new residential lots, house, and a subdivision rental or lease purpose by the developer, builder, or any entity having a business relationship with the builder or the developer or builder. The subdivision shall be annotated on the cover sheet, no rental, lease of lots, houses, with the stated inserted by the developer's name in the blank line annotation. Other accent materials reflective of the Panhandle overlay specifications for architectural appearances for residential homes as well as compatible with the building elevation submitted with the request of vinyl shall only be permitted to be used in easel and softens. So, it appears that it will be eleven conditions.
Alright, is the applicant present?
I'll make a quick correction. Um...
That paragraph.
Okay. Yeah, so condition number ten will state the information that we asked the applicant, uh, the statement, given that they are not, um, having a relationship, business relationship. So, that will be condition number ten, and there would be a condition eleven, which will say that sanitation collection for the community will be, uh, established through, uh, one provider that will be engaged by the homeowners association for the, uh, entire community. Any standard costs incurred for sanitation collection shall be split equally amongst the sixty-three lots owners and collected as part of assessments imposed by the HOA. So, again, condition number eleven is regarding the sanitation. Okay, thank you. And that will conclude the conditions for this request.
Alright. Ms. Battle, are you?
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, uh, again, Tucker, Georgia, three-zero-zero-eight-four. Um, with regards to the conditions that have been read by staff, um, I just want to make, um, clear that there was a condition regarding the Panhandle. Um, we are not located within the Panhandle, and in condition number ten, there was actually a typo at the bottom of the page um, where that language, we were asking that to be removed. Um, otherwise, uh, we are extremely excited about this project. Um, it is south of, um, Point South Parkway in Flint Brook, um, past, uh, Independent Park. Um, it's a very new subdiv- it will be the newest subdivision within this community. Um, there hasn't been a lot of new, um, development in the area. Uh, we're extremely excited about this, and, uh, we respectfully request, uh, approval of the application as presented. I know that you all had a presentation by, uh, my urban planner last month on this matter. Okay?
Commissioner Franklin?
I am so excited about this new development in the Flint River Road Point South area. Point South Flint River is one of our oldest communities, not the oldest now, but one of them, where I remember, um, John Wieland Homes, one of his first communities were built in Clayton County, was built in this area. We do have the brand-new Flint River Community Center, which now offers cultural arts experiences. So, it is with great anticipation that I definitely offer for us to, um, approve this with the conditions that have been read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Can't wait for the ribbon cutting. One thing, hold on a minute. Did we get the streetscape lighting? Got me excited. We did get this lighting. She had it in there. Yeah, you...
So, the preliminary plat.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mister Chairman, the last item on the agenda is item number forty-five. Freeland Plats twenty-one oh-three zero-zero-one-eight to develop sixty-three single-family detached homes.
Mister McSwain?
Okay, yes, I will, uh, read the request here, and, uh, states here that we're gonna have twelve potential conditions for this request. This is the preliminary plat for the request, and I will start with the conditions. Uh, the maximum number of lots shall be sixty-three. The site layout shall...
Hold on a second, if you don't mind. Do we have to read them again, or can we add them?
Well, um, ten, but the speaker identified this is related to ninety-one-ten Thomas Road.
Okay.
Yeah, you say that there's the same conditions and add that last one.
Okay, yes. So, this request...
So, you don't have to read them, Tyler, to see the same ones?
Okay, no. Saves me a breath for two. Alright, so this is the preliminary plat request for the previous, uh, rezoning requests. And again, the previous eleven conditions were read for the prior request, and we believe we're gonna add a twelfth condition regarding the landscaping. And staff recommends approval, and Commissioner, um, how are we gonna state?
You wanna state in the record?
We can state the condition stating that the, um, the houses are to have a approved landscape plan approved by staff reflective of the submitted site plan.
That, that word we worked just fine, the, uh, the applicant shall provide consistent landscaping along the front of the single-family lots, uh, subject to the approval of the community development department.
Okay, thank you, Madam.
Specifically what it is, is, um, this community is designed, again, for a place for our budding seniors as well as some, um, millennials, and we want people to be able to walk in the community safely. So, we're adding pedestrian lighting in the sidewalks, so... That's the twelfth condition.
Okay, so, Ms. Battle, we need, uh, do you need any, save any minutes in rebuttal before you?
Uh, no.
Okay, please proceed then.
Again, we are here, um, requesting approval of this application. Um, it's a sixty-three unit, uh, community. Um, I'm not gonna engage a lot more time. I guess I will save some time for rebuttal, just in case, we never know.
How many?
Uh, five minutes.
Five minutes. Put five minutes on the, on the timer, and at this time, this is a public hearing, so I'll entertain any, uh, anybody who wants to speak in favor of, favor of applicant's request.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Come forward, Mister Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. And my question is, what is the zoning of this part property? Uh, RS one-ten, RS one-eighty, what is the zoning?
Mister McSwain?
Mister Garber, the current zoning for this property is agriculture.
Once it, if approval is made, let's ask the question this way. If approval is made, what will be the zoning of the property, then the housing quality, then? Will it, can you give me that answer? RS...
And while he's thinking about that question, with all due respect, this is opportunity to speak in favor of this applicant's requests, not the zoning questions in general.
Uh...
But Mister, Mister McSwain, do you have an answer for him right quick?
Okay. So, Mister Garber, your question is, what is the quality of the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. So, again, the request is going from agriculture to a planned unit development.
Yes.
So, these particular lots are gonna be by design as, as what's being presented by the applicants. So, they're gonna follow based upon their desired, design layout that the applicant is presenting.
And what is that?
So, based upon the request...
Actually, um, Tyler, I think if...
They want to see the, the plaque.
Yeah, you can show that, but as far as having to explain that, then I would think Michelle should, if she feels comfortable or wants to go through that, but I would actually prefer that instead of asking questions, you'd be to speak in favor of or speak...
Yes, let's, let's stay on task here.
Please excuse my ignorance.
So, are you speaking in favor of this, this development or not?
I wish not to speak at all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Thank you for your courtesy.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of? Alright, anybody want to speak in opposition to? Opposition to? Ms. Battle? You have five minutes. Want to wave that?
No.
Okay, uh... Alright, Commissioner, uh, Franklin?
Yes, um... I do make a recommendation that this board approves it, and, um, this final statement may answer your question. It is, it will still be consistent with the area, which majority of the area is RS one-ten. So, do, we do approve this project as read into the minutes with the additional condition, item number twelve, um, for board approval.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Is there any questions? Are there any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Congratulations.
Mister Reed, uh, Madam Clerk, is that the last one? Mister Reed, is there a need for executive session?
Um, yes, sir, um, litigation and personnel.
I'll make a motion to go on the executive session for litigation and personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Everybody have a great evening. Alright, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Ms. Ambles?
Once again, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Human Resources is presenting a request on behalf of the Sheriff Department. The request is retro pay for the employees named in the executive session memo that was presented to the board of commissioners. The cost for this request is six thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
Wait, this one is for which one now? I'm sorry?
The retro pay.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve? Alright, dies due to lack of emotion.
Okay, and the next one, uh, Chairman, per civil service rule five dot two oh-one, the starting salary of an employee shall normally be placed at the minimum step. However, the board of commissioners has the discretion to approve advanced step appoint- appointments. On behalf of Warren Nelson, Human Resources is presenting the request to hire a deputy warden at five percent above minimum compensation. The request is based on the candidate's twenty-nine-year progressive tenure with the state during which the candidate worked in many different capacities, thus establishing a well-rounded work experience. Entry total compensation is grade thirty-two step seven, total comp one oh-seven, eight ninety. Total compensation five percent above entry is grade thirty-two step twelve at a hundred and fourteen thousand three oh-seven. The total cost is six thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. However, the corrections budget can absorb the cost.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a...
Oh, what?
Oh, we're ready to proceed. Oh, goodness.
I'm sorry, um, Chairman and Commissioners. I have been advised by legal that we would need to put the person's name, actual name, on record. Unlike the previous appointment, I did refer to the executive session memo that the board has, and that will serve as record as to who these two are for. So, if I can withdraw this, bring it back with the, with the specific person, I would appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Good. Okay, alright, thank y'all.
Okay, well, any, hold on a second.
Oh, you're talking about the one he's trying to hire?
No.
I don't think so.
Excuse me.
He would not take it unless he guaranteed salary.
I'm sorry, but we do have a, we have a name of the, of the, uh, candidate. Her name is, uh, Sandra Abrams.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second. Are there any questions?
Uh, well...
That's not...
This is just a comment. Uh, I, I just want to be clear that what... Okay. I withdraw the question, right, 'cause I can't ask.
Alright. No other questions. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank y'all, I appreciate you.
Issue unanimous. Alright, nothing else before us. Ms. Ambles, stand by for one after, after the meeting. Uh, no other questions before us, or any questions. Nothing else before us, uh, entertain a motion to... to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Good night.